All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Everybody will please rise.
Heavenly Father, we'd like to ask that you, you watch over all the families in San Juan County, the constituents of San Juan County, watch over our firefighters, our sheriff's department, and all of our emergency response. We ask that you look over some of the families throughout the state of Mexico that may have struggles that we don't know about. And in your name we pray. Amen. Mr. Biggs?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the holy and righteous hands of one nation, individual, representative of justice for our home.
Mr. Stark, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do not. Agenda is as presented.
All right, I'll stand for a moment.
Chair, I've moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion will carry. All right, consent agenda. Consideration of approval of FY twenty-three budget adjustment number fifteen, resolution number twenty-two, twenty-three sixty, number two, consideration of approval of regular minutes from April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, number three, consideration of approval of regular minutes from April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, number four, consideration of renewal of proposal nineteen, twenty-twenty-eight, health screenings to LifeScan Wellness Center of Tampa, Florida, number five, consideration of renewal of proposal twenty, twenty-one, twelve, comprehensive inmate medical, mental health, and pharmaceutical care to WellPath of Nashville, Tennessee, and contract pharmacy services of Warrington, Pennsylvania. Number six, consideration of approval for submission of the annual twenty-twenty-three State Homeland Security Grant Program, SHSGP. Number seven, consideration of approval of submission of the annual twenty-twenty-three Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, and that will be it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion will carry. New business, consideration of application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Ordinance, Michelle Turett, Ellen. Good morning.
Good morning, or afternoon, or evening, or you decide what part of the world you're in. Commissioners, Mr. Chair Commissioners, J&amp;J Flowers LLC submitted a variance petition to the Community Development Department of February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. J&amp;J is seeking a variance from Section three A of the ordinance one-twenty, the minimum separation distance from a residence requirement. J&amp;J wishes to operate an outdoor production or grow area that may transition to an indoor grow at some point. J&amp;J also plans to conduct cannabis manufacturing on the property in two separate buildings. The proposed grow and manufacturing will all be on property located at seventeen, Road five-zero-one-eight-three, Bloomfield, New Mexico. The proposed cannabis business is within three hundred feet of three residences. A public hearing was held before Hearing Officer F. Chester Miller III on March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. The Community Development Department initially recommended the hearing officer, the variance be granted based on receiving no negative comments and all variance criteria having been met. After receiving negative comments at the hearing, staff reserves judgment as to whether the business would or would not be injurious to the neighborhood. Criteria D, the applicant was represented at the hearing by Jared O'Toole and Justin Bryant. Several residents of the nearby neighborhood appeared at the hearing and spoke against the variance. Only the resident who spoke in opposition, or pardon me, only one resident who spoke in opposition lives within three hundred feet of the proposed one, which is a hundred and forty-eight feet away. The hearing officer's findings of fact recount statements made at the hearing. Applicant is seeking a variance to last the life of the business. However, Hearing Officer Miller submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the request for variance be granted but limited one or two years with conditions that the fencing, security protections, and odor control measures the applicants indicated at the hearing all be instituted. This is an action item tonight, and staff is requesting the commission consider either approval or denial of this variance request.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as usual, I'd like to make a statement before we consider this item, and this is directed more to the public than to the commission. As usual, when the commission considers a cannabis variance application, it will be asking few, if any, questions to the applicant or persons opposed to the variance. The reason for this is that there has already been a hearing on this matter, and reconducting parts of the hearing tonight could violate the due process rights of the participants at the original hearing. Instead, the commission will be relying on the evidence collected at the earlier hearing to make their decision.
I just have one question for you. So the individual that spoke against it, which is their property?
I have the map up.
Sorry, I know you said. Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
I'd like to say some comments, Mr. Chairman, if I could, unless somebody else has some comments before me.
Go ahead.
Okay. Are Mr. O'Toole and Mr. Bryant here?
Yes, they are.
Right there? Okay. All right. God bless you guys. I appreciate you being a, being a, of a mind of being an entrepreneur. I appreciate that. You know, I've been looking at, and I don't know whether this is going to pass or not today. I don't know what's going to happen here. I've been reading some articles on this, and if it passes, if it passes, good luck to you. If it doesn't pass, we may be saving you a lot of extra money, blowing your money for nothing. I've been looking at some articles, and it may not apply here too much, but the cannabis crop, you know, the new thing everybody wants to grow cannabis may not be the cash crop it's made out to be. I don't know. I've been looking at some articles on that thing. So, you know, if it doesn't pass, it may save you a lot of money. You can look up those articles yourself and see what I'm talking about. But some of them are on the West Coast, some are on the East Coast, and, you know, whether it applies in Mexico, I don't know. It's still cannabis, you know. But anyway, I know I listened to the tape of the hearing, and I know you're concerned about the neighborhood and trying to get along with your neighbors and everything, which is great. I appreciate that. I really do. And, but my mail on this has been running about twenty to one against it. And I know you have, what, one, two, three, I think Michelle said, three residences within, within the three hundred feet, and one of the residences is, residence is allergic and has some health issues, and so I take that very seriously and everything. So, guys, I can't support you on it. This is just me, just being honest with you. Can't do it, you know. But whether it passes or not, I don't know. But at this time, I think it's going to be injurious to the neighborhood, and I'll make a motion that we deny this on that basis.
All right, I will seek a second unless there's any other comments.
I just had a question for Michelle. I scanned by it. So it was talking about that at some point that they were going to create some type of filtration or mist. Is that for outdoor grow or for indoor grow?
So indoors typically, and I can't speak to the applicants, but indoor grows typically have filtration systems, carbon filtration systems. They don't want anything in, and so nothing gets out.
Okay.
On an outdoor grow, there are methods that have been brought before us in other hearings that, and in this one, that basically weight down the scent molecules so that they don't go anywhere other than to the ground. And that's kind of what I believe the gentleman were talking about doing something similar to that to prevent any type of odor escaping the surrounding fencing.
Okay, thank you.
To this point, have we had any complaints on any of the other grows, the odor or asthma or?
We've had no health complaints or odor complaints. We have had complaints, but none of them were related to those specific issues.
All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I just noticed that the criteria is being met except for, I think, one, but not. Everything seems to be in order.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Collien, we are in order with all of the paperwork in.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. All right, with failure to have a second? I will seek another motion.
I would move that we table this at this time.
Okay, do I have a second to the table?
I would second that.
All right, with a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion will carry.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Number two, consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-two, twenty-three, sixty-one to decommission San Juan County Bridge thirty, no, eighty-one, eighteen.
Got it. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You recall at our last meeting, you all were presented with a report from our engineers at AECOM that was in two parts, one describing the current conditions of Bridge eighty-one, eighteen, and their recommendation to close, recommendation to close, and the second part being a, you know, alternatives assessment of what roadway improvements might be considered in the absence of that structure. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three dash sixty-one, which you're considering today, addresses the first part of that decision-making process in that it's a resolution to decommission Bridge eighty-one, eighteen. It does not make any decisions as to what transportation improvements might be made in the future, as were identified in those alternatives. The resolution itself provides some history of the, the structure as to when it was constructed, how it came to be where it is today, its current condition and sufficiency, as well as some, some efforts that were made to, to preserve its life, which were not insignificant, as well as the traffic conditions there. One thing to note is that we did consult with all of our emergency services here in San Juan County, Fire, Sheriff, CMS, none of those folks use that structure. Does recall the conversation we had with our insurance carrier about continued operation of that bridge in the presence of that, that recommendation to close from an engineer. So indeed, what we're proposing in resolution twenty-three, or twenty-two, twenty-three, sixty-one is a closure of the bridge effective June fifth of this year. That would allow us about a month from today to provide adequate notifications, both in the area as well as in, in media, to notify folks that might use that bridge of its closure. Following this decision, if it is one of closure, staff would organize a public information meeting, most likely at the fire station there on, on Road forty-nine, ninety, to get some public input on those alternatives which were presented to us by our engineer. Most likely, and I think what was presented as alternative C, which were improvements to Road forty-nine, ninety, what improvements folks that use the road, use that road every day might, might see beneficial in the, you know, with the increase of what we would perceive be, what we would perceive as minor additional traffic. Nevertheless, it is, is some level of additional traffic that would be created. So what transportation measures could be implemented to reduce any, any possible impacts? I think the other alternatives which were presented, two of them being new bridges, those are, those are likely to be tough sells, at least from a funding perspective. There simply isn't traffic volume on that, that road today, with or without the bridge, that would frankly make that project or either of those projects score well in a, in a grant environment. It would likely be something that would have to be a locally funded initiative, and, you know, thirteen million and seventeen million dollars is, is an awful lot of money for the volume of traffic that Bridge eighty-one, eighteen sees. So with that, I would certainly be happy to try to answer any questions you might have and request your approval of resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, sixty-one.
Great. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, the volume of traffic, is it low, medium, moderate? What's the?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Tocchini, it's very low. So ASHTO, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Affiliations, creates what are called, classifies road volumes as they relate to a general classification of the road. So anything less than four hundred vehicle trips per day results in a classification of a very low volume road. The structure, as we measured last November, has a hundred and seventy-four vehicles per day. That's combined directions, so, you know, eighty, eighty, does that translate to eighty-seven trips each way? So very low volume road is what the road is classified as.
Mr. Chairman, I could say some things.
Yes.
Yeah. Someone asked me, why didn't we get an alternative before this was projected to be closed? Mr. Stark, can you kind of answer that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner McDaniel. So as you know, this bridge, we've had a long history with, with trying to, to keep it operational, and frankly, we've been losing the battle to Mother Nature. And so you might remember, three years ago, we approached our, you may not, but the other commissioners would that were here, approached our state legislators to have an alternative study funding, funded through capital outlay, and we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And so the purpose of this study was to advise us on ways by which we could have alternatives in place if the bridge were to fail. Well, during the report, the engineering firm recognized that we have a bridge that, you know, as opposed as a dangerous condition to public safety, given the amount of erosion that we're seeing underneath the substructure of the bridge. And so that wasn't anticipated when we were having the alternative study done. And of course, as you know, they are recommending, strongly recommending and advising that, that we close the bridge immediately due to these conditions.
Okay. Those engineers that did that study, do you know where they were from? Were they from here, or where were they?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDaniel, I defer to Mr. Perrell. AECOM is a, it's a global engineering company, but the office that did this report is in Albuquerque. They actually started working on this bridge for us in the early two thousands. They, they had done some initial studies and have continued to be part of the team on this and other projects since. So they have a fairly long history of working with our Public Works Department.
Is it, Mr. Perrell or Mr. Stark, is there going to be a traffic study done again where they're going to see the traffic count out there in various places?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDaniel, we can certainly continue to monitor traffic. We had done the study last November. My department has the necessary technology to complete these on, on pretty short notice. So it's, it's certainly something we can keep an eye on. I think one particular point to make is, you know, alternative C, which was the, the highest scoring alternative in that presentation which was given to you all, recommends some improvements to Road forty-nine, ninety. That being said, Road forty-nine, ninety today is very functional for the traffic it sees. I think we had a, a capacity analysis done at one point in time that suggested that road was sufficient in its current geometry for upwards of nine thousand vehicle trips a day. The study we did last November revealed a, a traffic count in the order of eleven, twelve hundred vehicles a day, so it's operating well below capacity. And let's suggest that all that current traffic that's using the bridge were to use forty-nine, ninety, it still remains well below that operational capacity for the, the geometry of the road. So not suggesting that improvements aren't something that would be a benefit to the community and folks that use that road and something we'll, we'll strongly, strongly look forward to completing. But the, perhaps what your original question was, why wasn't this work completed, you know, before a potential closure of the bridge? You know, the traffic volumes on the road don't necessarily suggest it's, it's required. You know, again, forty-nine, ninety is operational as it is. There are two low water crossings that do present periodic closures during rainfall events. I think those would be priority projects to complete with or without closure of the bridge, frankly. But that, that's something I think that during that public information process, certainly want to get folks' opinion on that, and then if there's any other geometric changes to the road that, that they see as problematic in their daily use of, of that road.
Okay. I know that Sullivan Road, or also known as forty-nine, ninety, is inundated with traffic now. The numbers may not show it, but it's, it's bad, and I'm thinking that the closure of this bridge is going to make it worse. It's going to put more traffic on it. You know, I don't want to put anybody, it's, you know, in safety, life and danger by, by closing it, but I understand what they're recommending. But I know there's people out Blanco Canyon, Armenta Canyon, different canyons out there that come into Blanco for their mail, school, you know, and they're going to have to go all the way around, you know. So I'm thinking of my constituents in that area, you know, what can we do? But I am not for making Sullivan Road more traffic, having more traffic. But I understand that, you know, the bridge is, is a danger, dangerous. So anyway, that's my position on it, which is if you take out a bridge, you replace it. And that's just what I think. But I know it may not have anything to do with today's business, but that's my thoughts on it. Yeah. I'll defer to Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Chair, I just had a question for Mr. Perrell. So this is what we got in depth presentation from the, the engineer, and at this time, it doesn't even really fit the area that it is. It was smaller than the, the, what do you call it, the width of the?
Channel? Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fortner, that's correct. So that bridge was found if infrastructure, if you will, in that it was a piece of infrastructure that was no longer needed by the, the New Mexico DOT. It was nearly actually forty years old when it was moved to its, its current location. It's two hundred and fifty feet long, more or less, the, the channel at that location, seven hundred feet wide. If you take a three-inch diameter straw and try to stick it through a one-inch diameter straw, you're going to have, you know, flow, flow issues within that straw. And that's what, that's what the report suggested, and is, is witnessed in reality, you know, at that structure. And you know, I did say at the last meeting, it's, it's shocking that that bridge is, is still open, and I, and I still agree with that statement. But I, I think the reason it's still open is a testament to the effort that was put in by frankly, previous and current Public Works efforts, as well as, you know, much like what Commissioner McDaniel suggested, a, a desire to keep that structure open as long as possible for the people that use it. You know, at this point, it's nearly a hundred years old. You know, at this point, it's nearly a hundred years old. And it really truly is, in my opinion, as well of our, you know, hired engineer. It's time to move on.
And you said that at some time you will have more public feedback about the need out there and some type of traffic study and?
Indeed. So Commissioner Fortner, you know, obviously, it's at your pleasure, whether or not you choose to decommission the structure today. If you're, if you were not to do that, I think we'd still seek public input on improvements to transportation network in the area. And frankly, we'll get that meeting schedule, I would suspect, sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Is it impossible right now, Ben? It's too dangerous to even pass over it?
It is open for public use. It is in the same condition as it was when it was reviewed by our engineer with the recommendation to close. I think the reason for not closing it immediately, one is there's no rain in the immediate forecast and two, wanting to provide as much notice as we can to folks that use it to make other plans for the area.
Okay, just one more question. Where would the funding for a new bridge come from? Is that from the state or federal grant or long term?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fortner, typically we fund bridges largely, it starts with planning process where we get that bridge into a, some form of metropolitan transportation plan, typically at the MPO, and have to express a purpose and a need. The challenge with this location is that, as I mentioned, it's very low volume. And in order to score well on a, at least a federal grant application, a bridge that serves, you know, as few as a hundred and eighty people per day would not be something that would likely receive federal funding. Thirteen million dollars in any arena, federal or state, is indeed a lot of money. You know, our capital outlay programs are typically two million and under. So it would take many, many capital outlay grants to finish a project like that. For instance, on the Road 5500 Bridge, which we recently completed, that was funded in three parts, roughly two and a half million each, two and a half million in capital outlay, two and a half million in a DOT program called the Transportation Projects Fund, and two and a half million with our own funding. So triple that cost is what we'd be looking at. And frankly, those programs that we received funding for that bridge, we were more or less maxing out the funding we were going to receive from them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perrell.
So really where we're kind of at right now is it's just a safety issue. We're not using it for emergency use with fire, emergency vehicles at all, right?
Mr. Chairman, no. So I would suggest that the primary users of the bridge are oil and gas service trucks, so pickup trucks. They're current, it's currently load rated and height restricted to a point where they can't use product or water trucks or product trucks can't use it. I do suspect there's some number of residents in Blanco Canyon that do use the bridge to get to Blanco. But by and large, the traffic, at least I've observed out there, are service trucks that support oil and gas development.
Well, I know we went on a tour, staff and Commissioner McDaniel's. And there was never two vehicles on the bridge at the same time. The one time there was two, one stopped, let the other one go across completely, and then they followed. So even the folks out there, I think, know that it's a pretty dangerous. But I do want to keep in mind that we are just, this is just about closing the bridge. We can discuss and debate what we're going to do to replace it, fix it up, whatever we might need to do at another time.
Absolutely.
After community.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just wanted to add, in addition to emergency services, we also reached out to Hillcorp to make certain that this, they're the primary producer in the area and their respective service companies, to make certain this wouldn't be problematic for their operations and just wanted to confirm again with them that it would not. They would adjust run routes accordingly. They appreciated the potential due notice the county is willing to give so that they'd have time to make those changes. I did make an offer to them that you'd asked me to at the last meeting regarding whether or not, similar to Ten Mile Bridge, where there was an investment made by the producing companies in the area to improve that bridge, would Hillcorp and others be interested? And they have not responded to my email as of yet. My understanding is they're not, based on a verbal phone conversation I had, that they would consider the thirteen million dollar price tag to be well beyond the, you know, their capacity for the need of maintaining that bridge.
Well, thank you for doing that. Do we have any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
The Daily Times had the article on the bridge on the front page. And I'm sure the individuals who utilize that, it's on the inconvenience. Have you, Mr. Stark or Mr. Perrell, have you gotten any feedback from people?
My office has not received any feedback on those articles.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Totacini, I did have a conversation with Mr. Danny Sullivan regarding the bridge and provided him with a copy of the report.
Okay.
I also had a conversation with former Commissioner Mike Sullivan as well on Friday of last week, too.
My San Juan County Commission Museum, meaning they did mention that going around would be longer. I guess that's where some of that concern is for people who utilize that every day. But I know the safety is a real concern.
I did have two people reach out to me. One of them is a resident in Blanco. And they understand that the bridge is in dire straits and they understand closing it as long as we're willing to do something on the other side. And then the other one, Mr. Perrell, was my own father. My grandfather was one of them that installed that bridge out there. So he will be watching online and being very critical of what's going on here. So.
Perhaps you could help install.
No, I will not. But so that's how long ago that was. And so it's kind of cool that I have a little connection to it.
Yeah, there's a lot of history to it, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, the people want a bridge. You know, I know there's other people, other than those mentioned today, that want the bridge. I know that. I want the bridge. So anyway, I realize it's a safety issue. I know now is not the time to discuss it, but I'm looking forward to the day we can have a meeting and figure out what we can do to replace it or whatever alternative we may have. But I'm not interested in having more traffic on Sullivan Road.
The only other thing?
Mr. Chair, you know, the workmanship of the people in the past, I mean, some things have lasted really long, even though they're getting old. It's amazing what the work that they did. But I guess eventually everything deteriorates and begins to break down. So, but I guess we're like your grandfather who now built that bridge. I mean, it's amazing how long it lasted.
It is. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, as I've said a few times now, it's been in that location since nineteen sixty-six, so sixty years. Very long time. I don't know that we have another bridge that's open to vehicle traffic that's that old. It's a simple bridge design. It's a Palmer Trust Bridge. They last a long time. They provide a different level of service than what current bridges do. You know, compare cobblestones to paved highways, if you will. But cobblestone roads last longer than paved highways, so.
Was this one ordered from Sears and Roebuck?
I do not know the origin of this.
Chairman, also, you know, I think it would be very beneficial for the people of San Juan County, long-term, to have another bridge. Either that one, repair that one, or, you know, replace it with a longer bridge or put another one up out there or something. But I think long-term, that's the way to go. People will benefit. There's a lot of traffic up. You may not see it reflected on some of those counts, you know. But people go up some of those canyons. It's very beautiful up there, a lot of history up there. And I know what it is up there, but anyway, I know today's not the day to talk about that. But again, I'm looking forward to the day that we can sit down and talk about what we can do.
All right. Well, I will seek a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 222361.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Number three, Byron's House of Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for just giving me a few minutes to share about Byron's House of Hope. Just a little bit about myself. My name's Brian Myers. I'm the Executive Director of Convicted by Christ. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit prison ministry organization started in 2011 with myself and the gentleman that you see on the picture, Byron Void. Just want to share a little bit about who he is. I'm also Director of Byron's House of Hope. We are a six-month mandatory, state-recognized, adult probation and parole-recognized transition home for parolees coming out of prison. And we receive applications from all the eleven different prisons throughout the state. I worked for three and a half years as chaplain at the San Juan County Adult Detention Center. And I left that work to become full-time director at Byron's House. I'm also a credentialed pastor. And so convicted by Christ, I met this gentleman. We were writing back and forth while he was in prison. He did sixteen years. And when he got out, he paroled to his mother's place, met with him on a weekly basis. He gave, I will say, convicted by Christ and Byron's House, we are faith-based. This gentleman gave his life over to God when he was in prison, got out, and we both realized we had a desire to start a support group for men coming out of jail and prison and hopefully eventually opened up a home, transition home to support guys, to help them get back into society. And I won't go into Byron's history, but we started convicted by Christ. And he got a job on the oil rigs, got back into some of his old playground and his old playmates and cut his ankle monitor off, went on the run and was missing for a period of time. And his story ended with Christmas Eve of 2012. The police got word of his location. He was barricaded in a concrete block building in Aztec on Ruins Road. And he had taken his life. He had told me, he said, "I will never return to prison." And he said, "Even though I'm outside those prison walls, I still feel like I'm in one." I kind of wanted to give up at that point, but I felt like God spoke to me and said, "Hey, you need to continue this work because I want to bring other people alongside you and I want you to be a place of hope for guys getting out of prison that they think their only option is not to take their life." And so again, I could go into more of his story. But in, so we became a 501(c)(3) and we formed a board. And it's called Convicted by Christ. We have Thursday night support group meetings. It's specifically designed for guys coming out of jail and prison, guys wrestling with addiction. And we are faith-based. We have a message. We have testimonies. We have worship on those Thursday nights. And our Board of Convicted by Christ, we worked for a couple of years and we were looking for property to open up a transition home. And God opened the door for us to purchase the old path building down Pinion Street, close to the hospital. That was the homeless shelter. And we moved, well, Byron's House of Hope started January 1st of 2018. So we've been up and running for about five and a half years. This is a picture of some of the guys that were in the program in front of the old path building. Costs a lot of money. We had to get a fifty-four thousand dollar sprinkler system in that building. We just replaced the roof, got some insurance money for that. And I put some, you can go to the next one. Just if you're not familiar with Byron's House of Hope, we do have a strong relationship with the local state adult probation and parole. I had a couple of meetings down in Albuquerque and Santa Fe, sat in front of the parole board there. They gave us their stamp of approval. We are mandatory six months with options for up to a year for parolees. We help guys assist to obtain proper documentation. We do life skill classes, parenting, fatherhood classes, Bible classes, church services. We have the guys do required community service work. We have them do that at Echo Food Bank, Habitat for Humanity, and a variety of different churches. We provide GED training. We assist the guys with job placement, transportation. We assist them with housing. We do have a variety of support groups that they are required to attend. We partner with Cottonwood and Overcomers Counseling, their local counseling service providers. We have the guys go on a variety of different field trips, outings, just to, you know, create a healthy balance. And we want to develop more of a follow-up aftercare service. I just had a past graduate who's been out three years contact me today. He was freaking out. He was over at the, got called in, tested dirty. And so we recognize there's a need for follow-up and aftercare. This is a picture of a recent graduate with some of the current guys that are at Byron's House. You can go to the next one. And just some stats. I know some of you guys like stats. So we did open Byron's House of Hope, January 1st, 2018. As I said, we bought the old path building. We're currently at fifty-eight percent men completing and graduating. New Mexico, I just looked this stat up. New Mexico's current recidivism rate is at forty-nine percent. So fifty-eight percent seems like a negative score, but we look at that as a very positive score. We've taken in fifty men since we've opened. We are faith-based. We're privately funded. Although I will say that I'm grateful for the city of Farmington. They have provided funding for us the last three years through the CDBG. And we are the only men's transition living home for parolees in San Juan County. We currently have a bed space of seven. We're full. We're full until September, and we would like to increase to eleven. We got the space to do it. We currently have six paid staff. We'd like to hire more staff. Just to give you some figures there, you know, approximately it's about twelve thousand for a year for a part-time staff, double that for a full-time. And I'll leave this last statistic. Again, minusing the funding that we've received from the city of Farmington, which is considered government funding. This is a recent statistic. In 2021, it costs approximately a hundred and fifty dollars a day to house inmates in prison due to lack of transitional living homes and programs. Byron's House, we can house men for half that cost, seventy-five a day. As long as we can stay privately funding, we're really saving the county and state approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars per inmate for a hundred and eighty days. So if you take how much it costs per day, a hundred and fifty times one eighty, that's where I come up with the twenty-seven thousand. And if we can, at seven, being a six-month program and seven guys at a time, we can affect fourteen men per year. You take out twenty-seven thousand times fourteen men, we're actually helping to save the county and the state upwards of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year as long as we can continue to stay privately funded. And again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to do a presentation. I've been in jail and prison ministry work for fourteen years. I really enjoy it. It's very challenging. And we would really appreciate your support. I'm always looking for other opportunities. It's difficult at times as privately funded. But we would appreciate your support. And together, we can make a greater impact in our city, county, and state. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hollywood, could you go back to that last slide?
Mr. Hollywood, could you go back to that last slide?
Uh, Mr. Chair, what is, what is the, the limitation to going, from going from seven to 11? Is it, is it more staff members, is it?
It really is come down to staffing and the monies to pay staff. Um, so yeah, I mean, when the, the old path building, they were running, I think, about 35, um, homeless people. And so there's definitely room for us to open up another dorm room, which would, um, be able to, for us to, to put it up to 11. But staffing and, and the funding to pay for the staffing is, you know, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We want to make sure that there's adequate funding and, uh, if we can pay staff, we can, there's room to increase our number of... Uh, I see Mr. Webb back here, we don't want to create another county jail, but, uh, um, we're, we're pleased with the success that we've seen.
So you have the space. And how many more staff members would you need? Because right now it's almost one-to-one. How many more staff members would you need to go to 11?
I would say at least one full-time or two part-time.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for coming today. Uh, you had made a request to the Commission for some donations and I asked that you come and talk to us. I appreciate you being here in person.
Thank you.
Um, I've been involved with the Masada House when it first started up. So I know this was a talk for a long time to do this for men. So, um, where does most of your funding come from? A lot of donations or do you work with the Salvation Army at all or?
No, uh, the Four Corners Foundation, I, I want to give a shout out to them. They have been a huge support for us. Um, you know, the city of Farmington, um, churches, other organizations, um, privately individuals, you know, who, private donors who, who know about us. Um, I'm originally about 16 years ago back from Pennsylvania and, uh, there's some home churches back there that know about our work and they also send and provide some funding. But things are getting more expensive as we all know, um, so...
What are the qualifications for going into this transitional housing?
So, you know, all of the 11 prisons throughout the state, uh, when we got our stamp of approval from, uh, the parole board, uh, in Santa Fe and Albuquerque, they left all the prisons know about, hey, there's a transition home now in Farmington. So when inmates, uh, and these are from state inmates, when their parole time is coming up, um, a lot of their parole plans get denied because they might go back to families. And that's honestly some of the reason why that caused them to end up back in prison. So they either have to just sit and finish their time in prison or they, uh, apply for other programs that are available. Um, and I, I will say that, I would say probably about 85% of the guys that we take are from our local area to begin with. But we have taken men that are not from our area. Um, and so the inmate will get with their caseworker and fill out an application, the caseworker, we work directly with them. They will send us the application and then we have a evaluation, application process to determine, um, who we take. We can't take sex offenders, um. For, for one, because we have a park close to us, legally we can't take sex offenders, so... But, uh, we've taken violent crimes, we've taken guys that have spent anywhere from 18 months the whole way up to 40 years of incarceration.
And what's your waitlist like right now?
Um, I mean, we have five waiting to come, so we're, we're, we're full at seven and we have enough accepted that we're going to be full up until September at this point. So any applications that we get in that their release date is before September, we, we fortunately can't take. Um, you know, unless we're, open up more bed space.
And so the barriers right now is staffing?
Yeah.
Mostly? Okay.
Yeah. We do have house parents that live there. Um, a, if you're a praying individual, a prayer for us is, and we have some, uh, options set in place, but our, our current, uh, house parents, they will be leaving, uh, in October to move back east to take care of, uh, elderly parents. So, um, yeah, we're looking for other house parents, but we have some options because we don't want to close the doors.
Okay, and so, uh, we have the Mental Wellness Resource Center and, um, Lisa oversees that. That's something that you have worked with also as far as services and those type things?
A little bit, yeah. Um, if we recognize that some of our men end up needing professional or mental health, um, counseling, we, we have areas that we refer them to.
Okay, and you know, Christopher does a really good job at the Salvation Army. And so I don't know, you know, coordination of what you do, but, um, that might be something, especially as far as areas of funding for you. I know it's, uh, you know, you depend a lot on that, but...
I'm going to be looking in, yeah, there's United Way, I know that I, I might look into them and they're, excuse me, um, probation and parole, the, the correctional department, they are recognizing that even though we're a faith-based program, they're recognizing that they're starting to see, um, some higher success rate, um, in that. And so there, there are, um, some funding opportunities that I think are going to be, um, becoming available to faith-based programs. So we're going to try to take advantage of any of those that come.
Okay, and the Thursday night meetings that you were talking about, that is just for the men in the facility or is for the community at large?
It's for the community at large, yeah. We've been meeting since September 2011. Um, it's a support group meeting for any, any men, male, uh, men, um, coming out of jail and prison, wrestling with addictions. Our Byron's House of Hope guys are required to attend that meeting, but it's open to the community.
Okay, well, Mr. Mars, thank you for not giving up and continuing this because I know it's very important.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Chair, one, one follow-up question. So you said you have five on the waitlist.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how many have you denied?
That's a good question. We, um, within the first three months, we, we keep track, within the first three months of this year, January to, um, the end of March, we had received, uh, 50 state inmate applications. So we've had to deny a lot, um, just for spacing reasons and a variety of other reasons as well. Yeah, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Of all the men that get served here, what percentage are Native Americans?
Um, that's definitely going to be our higher percentage. I'd say it's probably 65 to 70%, but we're open to any ethnicity. I think just because of where we live, that percentage is going to be higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, Mr. Myers, we would like to thank you for your leadership and your service and your presentation tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just leave some brochures in case you guys would like to?
You would just want to give to Mr. Sawyer if you can pass him down?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, reports from county manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. A brief update for you tonight, um, just in, in relative to, to, to workforce, um, and trying to assist in that area. You know, just a reminder, this Thursday, uh, we have agreed to assist the Workforce Connections in hosting, um, their annual, um, employment fair. This is two years in a row now, they've held this event from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at McGee Park. Uh, they've got over 80 employers from across the region that will be attending, uh, the event. Uh, San Juan County, we, we will have three booths, you know, the Sheriff's Office and Fire Department and HR will be there touting the jobs that we have, uh, available. And I know some of the, uh, private sector companies will be there as well, Pesco and San Juan Regional Medical Center. I heard Taco Bell's.
That's right.
Are you, Mr. Chairman, working the booth?
I, 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 well, no.
Oh, okay. But it'll be a great event, uh, we're happy to support it again and, and really we're hoping to, you know, connect jobs to people or, or people to jobs, however that needs to work. But, um, a lot of opportunities in our community right now. And so if somebody's out looking for a job, this would be a great way to do it. Uh, folks can be interviewed on site, um, they'll have rooms set up to be able to handle that. Also helping folks out with, uh, job skills and resumes and, and applications if needed, right on the spot, uh, through various websites. Well, uh, Workforce Connections, Amy Carlson and her team, um, do a great job here locally and, and, uh, she's been the inspiration for this event. And, and so I just want to make sure you all are aware of that and certainly the community at large, uh, for those that may know somebody looking for work. And also related to, to work, we are, we've received word, we haven't received, uh, the amount yet, but our intern program, we've been able to work with, uh, the New Mexico Public Education Department, our HR department, um, Roberta Pedia and Tara Martinez have submitted our application to participate again. We'll, we'll hope to hear, uh, we've asked for 100 interns and five adult coordinators. Uh, that was the program that we, we facilitated on behalf of the area, uh, for county intern, interns, interns over at the city of Farmington and then, uh, other agencies throughout our county. Uh, we're hoping to bring, you know, the city of Aztec, the Bloomfield, um, we had Pesco last year, some other private employers. We want to really expand that out if we're awarded, um, you know, what we've requested. So we'll have those, uh, opportunities if, when they become available, uh, probably ready for, for, um, high school. It is, and just so you all know, it's 16, 16 years of age, uh, up until, um, you being a senior this year. They used to allow post-high school graduates to participate, so they've kind of consolidated that a little bit. But trying to, uh, and those are the rules we have to work, which, uh, under New Mexico Public Education Department. But still a great program and one that's been very valuable, uh, for us here at San Juan County. It's one of our strategic initiatives, as you know, to, to continue expanding and broadening our, our intern program. Uh, looking at that future generation, that future workforce that we hope to have employed here at San Juan County. A number of great examples of interns who have continued on into very successful careers at San Juan County. So I won't mention who they are, but there are quite a few in our county. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you can stand for any questions you might have.
All right, uh, reports from elected officials and department heads.
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
On Sunday, May 7th, uh, at Burke Park at 4:00 PM, those of you who like to run or walk and do it with a group, just move it, will be occurring there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Department heads? All right. Uh, moving on, comments input from general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes and to subjects that the Commission have not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to the comments or input from the general public. Do you have anyone who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Yes, come up to the podium and state your name. For us? Welcome.
My name is Theo Brown and, uh, it's regarding the variance. And I, I'm not going to add to what I've already said before because I know I'm not supposed to. But I would like, I don't know if anyone has gone up there to see where that property is in relation to my home. They say it's 148 feet. They must be going from the hill, down the hill to my house because I don't see 148 feet from that place to my house. It's right above me, there's a hill, and then there's my house. Okay, there's a little road between them, there's not much room. I would urge that before you make a decision, you take into account how close that is. And when they're talking about pushing down the particulates and, uh, the smell, I'm down there and I, I am scared to death because of my asthma. I'm also worried because my garden and my fruit tree are right there. That's all I wanted to say. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, these comments are, are really verging on testimony again. We already had a public hearing on this matter, so, um, if this, if the, and plus this is a matter that's already been, there's been formal action taken during this meeting. So if these comments are regarding the variance, this probably isn't, it's not a good idea to be testifying again.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Dolores Sabita and I did, uh, make comments on the first hearing. And I did state that I didn't see no signage at the first meeting on the property. But, um, I am...
Mr. Chairman, this, this, I'm sorry, but this is...
I'm sorry. You, you understand, we, we can't re, rehash it.
And, and then you can't take no other comments other than what was stated at the first...
Right.
Hearing.
And, and the reason for that is because that, that hearing was noticed to the public and people had the opportunity to come and talk. I know you, you spoke at that. Um, and so by, by doing comments here, you're, you're kind of getting an unfair, another bite of the apple because the applicants are not able to speak right now. So I'm sorry about that, I don't mean to be rude, but, but we're doing it to benefit everybody, you know, the due process of everybody involved. So sorry about that.
And we have, we appreciate you coming up.
Thanks.
All right, um, closed session. I will stand for motion.
Mr. Chair, move that we go into closed session to discuss, uh, to only discuss, uh, threatened or pending litigation in which the county is a participant, specifically the Navajo Nation redistricting lawsuit pursuant Section 10 dash 15 dash 1H7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry, we'll go straight into closed session.